Good morning. It's 10:00 AM on October 31st, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Moving now to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table. Doesn't look like we have anyone on Zoom. Seeing no one step forward, we'll close public comment number one. We have no agency reports, so moving to consideration of minutes from October 24, 2023.
I move approval of minutes as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
Move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consent agenda?
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Moving to addition, uh, we have no public hearing items, so moving to additional items, discussion and consideration of Story County credit card change to UMB through State Bank and Trust.
No, I was reading for you two.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We received notification from Community Choice Credit Union, who we all know that they carry our credit cards for all the departments in the county. And they are going to be changing their fraud policy and updating it, and all of our county credit cards will expire on December 8th. So when we receive the notification, I contacted them right away because the Sheriff's Office uses the cards a lot. And they informed me that with the new fraud policy, they will not just issue, currently the uh, the Sheriff's Office has 10 credit cards that we sign out, we know where they're at at all times. And they said with the new policy, every individual employee would have to have their own card using their own birthday, social security number for fraud purposes. I emailed the subject back and said that is not doable in our circumstance. So uh, speaking with Lisa Markley, I reached out to State Bank since that's where we do a lot of our banking. And they have a credit card program through UMB. And they have a government policy that you can use too, which actually gives us more time to pay our bills because they understand how government works.
Oh.
And um, each, after speaking with them, each department would still get their own sets of cards. They would have their own online uh, sign-ins so they can actually view their cards and get their statements online. And uh, the credit limits, um, Lisa put together, or Lisa Markley put together all of the credit limits for all the departments, who the contact people are, and I believe you've already submitted.
I have not submitted that because I'm waiting for a few departments yet.
Okay, so, once once Lisa can submit that, we all would do our own applica, I assume we would all do our own application like we do for Community Choice now. However, it's all under the umbrella of Story County and the Board of Supervisors, and then you have your different departments. Um, it would take approximately three weeks for the applications to go through and the cards to be able to come into our hands. Since we have an expiration date of December 8th with Community Choice, um, we would like to get this moving and get the board's approval to move forward with it and get the ball rolling. Great. Any questions?
Other credit cards, will we be moving them too, or the other ones not at Community Choice? Other county credit cards?
Other county credit cards. I'm not sure. That's, the only ones we have are Visa through Community Choice.
Okay. So are we moving all of them to State Bank or just Sheriff?
All of them.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I, is that what you were asking?
Yes.
Oh, okay. No, all of them are going.
Okay.
Uh, I have not heard, so, so the separate commissions and separate uh, entities that we're fiscal for can make their choices. And the assessor, the county assessor has decided to go with this, as has EMA, Emergency Management. So um, right now, the only one I haven't heard from is E911, um, whether they want to switch also, so.
I know that was a lot of work. Thank you. A lot of running around chasing.
It was, it, the deadline is just, you know.
It's gonna be around the corner.
That's ridiculous.
All right, any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Um, just a second. I would move, um, I'm lost.
Pardon me.
I would move that, um, we move Story County credit cards to UMB through State Bank and Trust.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving now to discussion and consideration of maintaining additional deputy on Sheriff's Office personnel. Morning.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to present today. Uh, we come before you today with um, uh, an issue of adding an additional deputy. But before you make the ask, I'd like to give you some background on that, what led to today. Over a year ago, uh, we were notified that one of our deputies was being deployed. And the deployment was going to be just over a year. So anyway, as established past practice that we've done in other divisions as well, uh, we asked the Board to be able to fill that position. And then through attrition, when that person is back from deployment, and through the attrition that would come, that would put us back to our official authorized strength. The Board had agreed to that. We filled that position. And we now are um, to a point where a week ago, one of our deputies has given us his retirement uh, letter. And he intends to be done uh, the end of December. And the position will either go back or we'll be able to fill that position depending upon the Board's decision. Uh, when we have done this, the uniqueness is this continues to fit within our approach to the Board uh, beginning a few years ago to bring a total number of an increase of deputies to the Sheriff's Office. Um, doing this gradually, uh, we have gotten a couple of deputies on that. We are still looking um, to continue that process. And the ask today comes that I ask that the Board consider um, and grant us the opportunity to replace the deputy uh, that is leaving. And that would increase our authorized strength by one deputy sheriff in the Sheriff's Office. All the equipment is already there. Uh, it's already purchased. It would be continuing what we've been doing for the past few months, the salary and benefits and things of this nature. And um, uh, being a senior deputy, the new deputy would start at the um, be getting deputy salary, so there'd be a little savings there, but through the step increases would eventually rise. So um, with that, I will leave that open to the Board to um, any questions you may have.
I have a question. Um, I know when you had proposed increasing the one deputy because of the person that was being deployed, one of the issues was overtime that you continually saw. With the, being up to this capacity that you're currently at, I know you're gonna be losing that deputy come December. Have you noticed less overtime because of better staffing, I guess I would say?
What, one of the predictions before Commander Ellis will talk is that currently this person resigning is assigned to the Support Services Division. We have two deputy civil process servers. And if that person is, uh, if we're not granted the extra position, then we will have to consider in our office what we're going to do. Are we gonna go back to one deputy in the Civil Process uh, Service? Or are we going to take a deputy from the patrol ranks and move them uh, to the Deputy Service Process? Uh, the duties have uh, increased such where we have uh, more paper service than just one deputy can handle. And if we go back to one, then the deputies uh, on uh, the different shifts are gonna have to pick up that slack and take the papers, which will take them away from their time in the contract towns and following up another law enforcement. And it will certainly be um, a notice to us. So that, Commander Ellis?
Um, in reference to your question with overtime, back last year, December of 2022, I had cited that during the year of 2022, we had um, mandated 135 hours of overtime just to cover, so we had minimum staffing. Um, on top of that, we were running with a minimum of two on shift, almost half of the time for most of the year. Since we've been able to add um, the position and backfilled in, in looking at the numbers this year in 2023 so far, um, I'm only seeing 66 hours of mandatory overtime for shift coverage. Um, that doesn't include bumping. We have had over 20 bumps um, from shift to shift to also fill some staff shortages. Um, but having that extra personnel gives us the ability to be able to do that in lieu of overtime. In addition, we are seeing an increase in minimum staffing averages to um, to where we're now, we're seeing more around an average of three on duty at a time by having that extra person on each shift. Um, we still will run with minimum of, of two at a time, and we're trying to get to the point where we run with an average of four, so we can run a minimum of three. Um, so the need for more personnel is still there, but we are seeing a reprieve by having an additional person on each of the shifts. Um, and the position that was backfilled, um, the, the individual that was on military leave, she is just, as of the middle of this month, um, been trained to be on her own. And so I expect that if we're able to maintain that position, that we'll even see a little bit more of a reprieve. Thank you.
You're saying 135 hours of overtime for all of 2022?
Yes, that did not include shift bumping.
Okay, but that's for 12 months?
Yes, but that was, that was just to maintain a minimum of two on staffing. And then we re, we would run with a minimum of two on staff for about half of the time, half of our shifts. And we're trying to um, because of the increase in violent crimes and the increase in demands on law enforcement and the increase in population, we're trying to up our staff minimums um, in order to meet those needs.
How long do you expect it would take to fill, if you, if you were able to keep this position, to then fill it? Do you already have someone ready to step in, or are we gonna have to go through the civil service process and then ILEA and all, and all of that? We have our certified list, and we do have people on there. We have, some people on there are already certified. Some people are not. We have not done backgrounds on any of them, so we would not know who would get the spot. Um, I had put some numbers together that if we start them in January, we would hopefully be able to get them into the April Academy if they're not certified for the wage assignments for the rest of the year. If the subject, uh, if the person was a certified deputy already, it would cost from January to the end of the fiscal year roughly $44,800. That's including the flex health, and I use the most expensive healthcare plan that we have, and FICA, NIPers, and also a personal day payout for the rest of the personal days they would have. If the person was non-certified, the, uh, it would be $41,900 roughly. Then that's January to the end of the fiscal year.
So Sheriff, let me ask a question. A year ago when you came to us, you were asking for a temporary position.
We were asking to backfill the position.
Asking to backfill a position and said that when we have attrition, we will go back to the authorized.
Yes, that is correct.
That's what you said a year ago?
Yes.
Okay, now you're saying we want to fill the position. We said we were gonna give up, basically.
Basically, that would be correct.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
And um, I think, was it last budget year, this past budget year? Um, you also purchased additional uniforms or car and everything so that you have all that in place. So if a new, if you have a new deputy or replace this one deputy, they wouldn't need all that additional material. Is that correct? Correct. The only thing that we um, would need to do would get them uniforms that's fit specifically to them, because everybody's different. So the ballistic vest and regular uniform wear. Um, I'm estimating maximum $3,000 to $5,000 just to cover everything, and that's actually kind of probably a high number. Uh, because there's, there's leather gear and things like that, but I'm sure that we could uh, find in stock. Um, we, when we made the ask last year, there was discussion of, let's see about if you can get the equipment other than the car. Um, and so we did work towards that in the last fiscal year budget to purchase uh, high dollar items such as the portable radios, the mobile radios for the car, all the equipment. Um, and I was, in, in lieu of getting rid of a car, we basically used uh, budgeted funds in order to have an extra vehicle without getting rid of one. We didn't purchase an extra vehicle that we weren't authorized to purchase. Uh, we just didn't get rid of a vehicle through the process. And um, so we wouldn't be making an ask for anything other than maintaining the salary as it stands, um, as well as um, you know, just equipping uniforms.
But if you do fill that position, that's not temporary, that's permanent.
Yes.
Correct.
So that would be increasing your, that would be increasing your force, your, your numbers outside of the budget process.
Outside.
That's my concern. The budget process starts in a few months. I, you know, and that's where you've been talking about increasing deputies all, you know, all along, is that comes in the normal annual budget process.
Well, I can.
I have concerns with it happening outside of the budget process.
Okay, let me um, address that a little bit. Each year, we go through the budget process. Last year, we were going through the budget process, and I had asked for additional, an additional personnel. The Board at that time was not prepared to give an additional staff uh, to the Sheriff's Office. But the Board did suggest that to come back to the Board in this fiscal year, should we um, feel we need that. And the suggestion was also made by the Board to go ahead with our existing budget we had last fiscal year to purchase those necessary things. So when we came to the Board, the ask would be less instead of trying to uh, appropriately and properly do that, which is uh, to outfit that deputy. We have done that. And the, the costs that we're bringing and asking for the Board today is just for the, for this fiscal year, the six months to go through. And that would be a position that would go continuously. So that would be increasing our total staff by one.
The concern that we had at the time, one of the many, or one of the concerns was the limitations the legislature had put on property taxes, and we don't know what the FY25 budget's gonna look like.
Mm-hmm.
We still don't know. We won't know until we get into the budget process. So my concern about filling that position right now, because of, that we have you know, a new revenue situation and we don't really know what it is, my concern stands.
I understand and uh, respect the position that the Board of Supervisors has. And one aspect, you gotta look into a crystal ball and try to see what's coming down the road. However, this process has been here forever. Every year I've been in um, process, our budget work sessions has been before the legislature has decided what the taxes are going to be in the tax base. Public safety must go on and must fulfill our roles. Um, the overtime hours Leanna talks about um, certainly are one thing, but if we're going to have to uh, operate one short than we've become used to, we're going to have to make the decision how, what position we're gonna fill in the Sheriff's Office. And then we're gonna be back into uh, probably more overtime, and that's where burnout of the employees comes into effect. And burnout also, in my opinion, relates directly to officer safety, to the public safety, and here I ask for um, uh, consideration of increasing the one personnel.
How many deputies does that 135 hours in 2022, how many deputies um, work that? I mean, it's not, it's 11 hours a month.
Well, right, the mandatory overtime is, um, like I said, that is only solely to get to the minimums of two personnel. Um, it doesn't, when, when we did a staffing analysis to try to increase our patrol strength, we actually came up with the fact that we would need uh, 27 patrol deputies to run with a minimum of three staff 24/7. And um, we are currently with the plus one at 21. And um, that's really what our goal is. I know, I think the, the overtime is a moot point. Um, the reason that we need additional staff is to increase our patrol strength because of the increase in crime population. Um, and so it's, it's officer safety and community safety based. If the person had not submitted their retirement at this particular time, you would still be at the one over?
Yes.
Yeah, and the conversation was at, when we were in budget work sessions, to go ahead and start purchasing
Mm-hmm.
the equipment to spread that cost out over potentially more than one.
The suggestion was made, but I don't think we took a vote and that it was direction of the Board. Because I wasn't necessarily, I didn't, I didn't um, bring that up. And I wondered why we were saying it, quite frankly.
Well, that's the direction we felt we were given when we left the, the Board session. Lisa made the uh, suggestion, and we didn't hear any negativity. No, don't do that. We left here with the understanding to do that. We have done that. And now um, uh, as we've been operating the last six months, it would be a continuation of what we've been doing the last six months. So if, I would think that if there's any time for the budget of Board of Supervisors of Story County to absorb this, this would be a very opportune time to do that. Any other comments? The internet, okay?
Um, the year, a year ago, um, the agreement was that when you had attrition, you would let that, you would keep that position vacant. And that was how we would do this. I still think this needs to be done during budget work sessions. We don't have other departments coming to us and saying, can we have a new position forever outside of budget work sessions?
This is, if I can respond to that real quickly, last year, we did have a request for an additional person. And the Board did not feel they could, at that time, could give us. So we went ahead and got the equipment for the position, and the Board did say, you have that need, come back to us, and we can discuss it then. And to me, that was all discussions we had during uh, the process, the budgeting process in the current fiscal year we're in right now. We're not asking for anything extra. I did the best I could to lay everything on the table as to what we were proposing. Yes, we'll go back to the current authorized strength if that's what the Board chooses to do. However, it is going to have effects on my personnel. And um, going along with the guidance we believe that we were given, we've done our part, and now continuing from the last budget work session to come back to the Board to uh, have that position granted.
We did not authorize a new position for you last year, that's true. I think we did for two years running.
Mm-hmm.
The previous two years, we authorized a new position for you each year. Just wanna make sure that we think about that.
We're not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. It's just, this is what it is.
I, I don't disagree with you, uh, Supervisor Merkin, that this is not the, the normal process and that we should follow the normal process. Um, my concern is how long it takes it, how long it takes to get a new deputy up to speed. Whether that's, you know, the gap that that's going to leave, even though this wasn't a permanent position. Um, I, I'm just worrying about that kind of open, unfilled time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we already know in a budget time, the request will be to fill a new position. And that'll delay everything to next fiscal year, and then potentially how, if, if that person has to go through the academy and, and all of, all of that.
That always happens. Whenever there's a new person, they always have months of going through the academy, months they have to, have to.
Right.
Have to ride with somebody else before they can go alone. The person who's come back from leave now can go out on patrol on her own, I heard. So that, that is something that, that fits in in terms of, you know, in terms of troop strength right there.
There's also, Connie had mentioned, we have a civil service list. And by civil service law, that good, we have to make a list for two years. And so as we go through that time, these people aren't just sitting there hoping Story County hires them. They're looking at other law enforcement agencies as well. And the Board knows as well as anyone else, the struggles and how competitive it is among other law enforcement agencies. So if we have someone on that list, and if they're still available, that's one thing. Yeah, we're gonna be preparing to do another list here shortly.
As long as it's still good for another year.
Okay, for another year. So um, hopefully there'll be, I don't know how many, what the numbers are on that list right now, but we hope there's somebody that's still there and um, anxious to uh, come to work.
I don't have other questions. I I hundred percent understand what Supervisor Merkin is saying. I just also look at um, you, what you've been operating on, and you would still be operating at the current level had this person not submitted a resignation notice um, on it. So you, you could be waiting another year or two at this particular, at this particular strength. Um, so that's just something else that I put into consideration.
I don't doubt that it would be a good thing to have another deputy. You know, but I think we need to look at it or to an organized process in terms of budget requests and look at more information at that time like we, like we have done in the past. And I just think it's a cleaner process. We look at all the data if we're doing it through our normal budget process. That's my concern. Yes, it's going to take a little bit more time if we don't approve it now. And I'm not saying I'm gonna vote for it. If we don't do it today, then I'm gonna vote for it during the budget. Because we don't know what other departments are going to have needs they're gonna bring to us. And if we approve a position for one department now, we're, we're taking that money out. We can't look at that, and we'll be looking at other needs and saying, gee. Maybe we'll say that's a higher need than this would have been. So we put ourselves, we kind of tie one hand behind our backs if we start making commitments for FY25 before we get into the FY25 budget process. That's my concern.
May I, may I just reiterate history on the requests? Um, that it was the first request back in, for fiscal year 2021 was for four personnel. Um, in order to bring up our staffing, because we've had the same patrol strings for well over 25 years, and our population has increased quite a bit. And as I stated before, um, you know, the violent crime and um, demands on law enforcement has increased quite a bit. And FY25, we refrained from making another ask um, because of the situation um, that COVID left us, not knowing where our revenues would be. And then in FY23, we requested for again, we're granted one. Um, and so this has been a process of asking for minimum staffing to get us to where we need to be able to increase our patrol strength since FY21, and we just keep, I guess, out of stalemate. And I just wanted to.
You just mentioned one that we filled. There was another one that we approved.
FY21. We received one.
And FY23?
FY22, we did not make an ask because of the. Twenty-two, we did not make an ask because of the um, but the need was still there. And then in FY twenty-three, we had requested for and received one.
I would um, state again that. The extenuating circumstances within the past budget process we adhered to. And um. The direction we were given was to purchase the equipment for another deputy. And then when the need arises. Come back even knowing it may be in the middle of the year instead of waiting for the next um, budget process. So here we are and uh, I think we are still within the appropriate budget process. Given the direction that we received.
Any other questions?
Well, I, I would make a motion if, if you would rather. I, I would move that we approve the sheriff's request. Um, to. Keep the, keep this position and fill it.
I'm in a second.
We have a motion in a second. Um, Heddens?
Aye.
Merkin?
No.
Basil, aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, board.
Uh, moving now to discussion and consideration of bid award to Van Man, Mannen Electric. For admin building generator replacement. Morning, Joby.
Good morning, board. Last week, we opened bids for this project that's been ongoing for the last few years. Did receive two, as you can see, one from Harold Pike Construction and one from Van, Van Monen Electric. Um. Do you see my recommendation is to go with Van Monen? They are capable, more incompetent. Electrical contractor, they're out at Newton, but they do a lot of work in this area. Very familiar with their work. Um. So I feel they're more than competent to do the project. Um. They were. Roughly ninety-seven thousand less than Harold Pike Construction. Um, I think a lot of that comes with. Harold Pike Construction's a general contractor that would be handling the project where Van Monen is a electrical contractor that would just sub out the concrete work. And it's primarily an electrical project. So I feel that's where the ninety thousand difference comes into play. My recommendation is for. Replacing the generator here at the admin, admin building. Taking the existing generator from this property and moving it to the engineer's complex and then um. Going with a one-year service plan for the generator. You can see that the five-year service plan is not cost effective based off what one-year cost is, so. This project is. One that come in significantly under budget. It's um, when you add in the design and engineering fees, um, we're looking at about a hundred and sixty-four thousand. And some change under what was the original budgeted price. And a lot of that comes from the generator itself is. Less expensive now than it was almost four years ago when this project started, so.
Wow.
Hmm, that's rare. Maybe that's a sign of. Positive things to come. The stuff is starting to come down in price. And this is an ARPA-funded project.
Any questions?
No, nope, nope. I would move that we award the bid for the administrative building generator, generator replacement to Van Monen Electric for four seventy-seven, four seventy-five.
Second. Moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens?
Aye.
Basil, aye.
Thank you.
Next, we've got discussion and consideration of requests from the city of Nevada and Nevada Economic Development Council for a hundred thousand dollars to assist in costs associated with. Extension of infrastructure. Good morning.
Good morning. Jordan, you want to kick us off or?
All at you.
Okay, uh, good to be with you this morning. Uh, included in on the board packet was. Really the funding request detail and, and how this, this funding request fits into a really larger project. So. I'd, I'd start first uh, highlighting the, the study that was commissioned by the Board of Supervisors. Uh, to really look at the housing needs across Story County minus Ames. And. One of the things that jumps out at us specifically as it relates to the community of Nevada. Is the real need we have for workforce housing. And again, the question is what really is? Kind of that targeted annual income of those folks. Again, a lot depends on the size of the household, but. If you're thinking about kind of uh, those folks, it's a seventy-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year. And if you look at that, the, the study highlights the need for four hundred and forty-eight. Additional housing units. And those can come in the form of rental and. We've had some exciting news on the rental front here in the community of Nevada. Uh, but really, how do we start to crack that nut of, of new construction that, that? Um, in, in getting that in a more attainable level. And so. What we're proposing is we've looked at our infill lots across the community. A lot of those have been developed. The community has been active in demo, demoing nuisance properties. Uh, but really we've identified uh, uh, the possibility. Um, and I would highlight that it really started with the discussion on the Homes for Iowa. Uh, project that you're supporting for the Story County Housing Trust Fund. We're going to be placing one of those homes. Uh, in, in a particular area on a lot that NEDC is purchasing. We'll close on today, actually, and. And how do we really build upon that, that one home? And targeting kind of this workforce housing in this area. So. We're looking to develop a, a twelve-lat subdivision. Uh, we'll need to do it in two phases. Uh, the first phase is a little easier because the, the land is being purchased today. That'll create four lots. And then hopefully we worked, hope to work uh, with another landowner. We've begun negotiations. On a property that would create an, an additional eight lots. So. What's really needed is uh, the deployment of sewer. And uh, what we've talked about as a community as well as an economic development group is. Uh, one of the ways we can continue to try to keep some of those costs low is while we're deploying a sewer line. Why not actually proceed with uh, stubbing in the water and sewer services to all twelve lots? Again, as a way to shave the cost of the ultimate house. Um, and again, ultimately, we're seeking a hundred thousand dollars. The infrastructure costs that we've detailed uh, for the sewer line as well as the water and, and sewer stubbing into the twelve lots. We have a, a quote on that for a hundred and eighty-nine. The overall cost of the project, we're projecting at six fifty-seven. So. Um, again, I'd welcome any um. Any questions you might have. This is really the first step. In, in really a unique project that would bring together a lot of different funding sources. Um, some LMI funds from the city of Nevada, uh, some of our own reserves. Uh, some state programs that would support workforce housing tax credits that would ultimately. Attract a developer interested in, in constructing a home in that three hundred thousand or less range. So. Um, I guess that it's a lot of moving pieces and starts really with uh, being able to ensure we have uh. Sewer specifically and ultimately the ability to stub in water and sewer. And I turned, this is a partnership. We're working in tandem with the city of Nevada on this.
Yeah, and if, if you remember, I think it was about two years ago, we requested some ARPA funding for another project. And unfortunately, we weren't able to, to move forward with that. And this is kind of in lieu of that. With all of our TIF development agreements that we have, I, I want to say around forty-nine point seven percent of those TIF funds go into LMI. Um, and we, we've been trying to figure out what we can use with those funds. And. I think this is a great project for the city that we, we will be able to utilize those funds. It comes out of two around two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. That we'll be able to utilize and help provide some homes for the, that LMI group. So. Uh, we're really excited about this project. I think it'll be a great, great addition to our community and um, just. Looking for your feedback.
Jordan, do you remember how much you uh, you uh, asked for and were granted on Project Uplift?
Uh, we asked for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
It was one eighty-nine, okay. And Lisa, um, I'm glad you're here. Cause I just wanted to make sure, I was going back and looking at our ARPA spreadsheet. Trying to figure out how much we had left because the project uplift is taken out of that. So do we still have? So I'm just wanting to know what our balance is right now in the ARPA. Cause we had a hundred thousand that we set aside for broadband and I wasn't, that's in there. So what's our, do you know what our balance is then?
Uh, before your motion this morning, it was a hundred and twelve. Um, with your motion this morning to go with this cheaper um, at uh. Generator, we're at two twenty, it's a little over two twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Revenue loss.
And your original project was a water, water infrastructure project, just like this is water infrastructure.
It was, yes.
My question was going to be the question for Lisa, so Linda just got.
He said that the two twenty is in revenue loss, though. It's.
I'm saying there's two hundred and twenty that has not been assigned to anything.
To anything. Okay, great.
I'm saying that if you're going to do this, I would prefer you do it revenue loss.
Got you, thank you.
And completion date. So completion date for the water work or um, the October twenty twenty-six?
For phase two. Yep, so uh, if all goes as planned. Um, we're, we're utilizing the opportunity that potentially this is a small enough project. Big for NEDC, but a small enough project that we could attract. Somebody that could do the work early spring even depending on how, how things even happen over the winter. It's. Uh, it's something they should be able to get in. Um, again, it's unique uh, and part of the reason is. Uh, utilizing the NEDC to lead that project is. We've got the ability to actually stub into individual lots. So we have that flexibility. Uh, that would be what we decide we want to do to support the overall affordability of the lot. So. Um, the water and sewer piece, again, it starts with this. It's going to be challenging without doing this piece. Will have to be done by the end of March. We're also very sensitive to when the Homes for Iowa might be arriving. We have a way, we could serve that if we needed to, but this is really. A more cost-effective way to open up some additional lots.
So the October twenty twenty-six is the finalization of the whole thing. But what we would be, you're asking us to fund, you would get done next year.
It, it would be done by the end of March, first part of April.
So we wouldn't even get close to the ARPA deadline.
We're hoping to start that, that process, the infrastructure process in December, this December.
Yeah, so March of twenty twenty-five is what you're saying.
Twenty twenty-four. Twenty-four, yeah.
Okay, cause your memo says twenty-five.
Does it? Oh my.
Yeah.
May twenty twenty-four.
That's, so phase one would be the actual four lots.
Yes. Right about phase one.
Project summary to March twenty twenty-four. Okay, okay.
Is the, the.
December to March is what you're, okay.
And it would be all of the lots, not just.
By all states as well, yeah.
You would be doing the infrastructure to all of the lots, not just the first ones, not just the phase one, okay.
Yeah, and that would allow us to keep this lower cost at it and. NEDC is able to move forward with the contractor and the city, if we did that, it would cost a lot more money and. Uh, bidding process time and uh, we're, we're fortunate that we have some contractors that have off times during these, this period that. Are able to get it finished for us.
Great, any other questions?
No. I would make the motion that we approve the request for the city of Nevada and Nevada Economic Developmental. Del, Development Council for a hundred thousand dollars, uh, utilizing ARPA revenue loss to assist in the costs associated with the. Extension of infrastructure.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye.
Good, we appreciate.
Save revenue loss.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of strategic plan. Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, after many months of work. I'm going to spend a couple of minutes reviewing the process that the board and other elected officials and department heads followed. To get to this point, um, and then open up for discussion and, and any questions the board may have. Um, really, starting about a year ago, the board started talking about, we need to um, go through a process to make sure we have a strategic plan. To guide us through the next five fiscal years. The current, the one we were operating under that point was through the end of fiscal year twenty-three. Um, so we, we engage a consultant team to assist Story County. Um, there were several sessions that were led by the consultants. As well as input that was sought uh, on, from, from them into department heads and elected officials. We had a team to really dive in and look at the, the recommendations and the strategies that were brought forth. Uh, through all that, we came to the point where we identified, um, aligned with our county's mission and values. Six focus areas, those being community well-being, quality of life infrastructure. Recruitment, development, and retention of Story County team members. Communication and information on services and programs, leveraging technology, and finally fiscal responsibility. So the plan that's on your agenda for today is the culmination of those many months of effort. Um, where we really dug into those six areas and the, the tasks and the responsibilities for each of those. I don't have a formal presentation. I think we've reviewed this enough that I just want to give you the opportunity to. To ask me if there are any additional questions and, and provide feedback. Uh, one thing I do want to note, um, following today's action. The posters are on your wall. Will be updated too accordingly to however we can to fit that space. Um, yeah, that's a, a, a great visual reminder of our, of the county's strategic plan and a, a, almost a daily reminder of what. What we need to focus on.
Well, I appreciate your work and I actually, I appreciate everyone um, who all came together, having that facilitated discussion and really. Identify where we want to go. As a county, provide that better service uh, for the people of Story County. Who come to Story County for services.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there, I, I thought, I, I toyed with the idea of actually counting up the number of hours. Collectively that was spent, just that I know of on this. And um, it does speak volumes to the commitment. Of those involved in the process to make sure that this is, this is um. As best as it can be to help move us forward and really, like you said. Provide great customer service and the services we need for our residents. I did not add it up.
No questions.
No, I, I just want to say thank you also to everyone who spent a lot of time and hours and editing and, and everything and sharing their thoughts. Um, and ideas for the future. Um, it was a really, I thought it was a great process. I'm glad that we walked through it and that we're here now.
I appreciate it as well. Now the work just begins. So. I have no further questions. I would move adoption of the organizational strategic plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens?
Aye.
Basil, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no departmental reports today. For other reports, we have discussion and direction for Story County Sheriff's Office Range House.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Okay, I'll just uh. Let's start out with a little history on this project. The brain is here today. I was asked to. Bring this forward in person direction. Um, we've. Talked about this project numerous times. Um, I'm just kind of going to bring it up to where. I was at with the status of the project at this date. Um, back in April, we had a board meeting. Project was discussed and my interpretation of the um. Direction that was given at that time was that we was going to hold off on the project until we was. Further into FY twenty-four to see where the ending fund balance was projected to be at the end. further into FY twenty four to see where the ending fund balance was projected to be at the end of the fiscal year. Um, and that the board would give notice when they were ready to proceed with the project. Then it was back in front of the board on June thirteenth. I was not in attendance at that meeting. Um, was not aware that it was happening and I was off that day. So I went back and listened to it, the audio from it to kind of get what the direction was given at that. And I got from that, that it was one million dollars was going to be labeled for Range House, but not appropriated to spend and was not moved out of the general fund into the capital projects fund. And that a separate motion at a later time would be needed to move forward with appropriating those funds and approving the project. Other items discussed at that time were the overall cost of the project was kind of reduced to somewhere around one point one million. And anything over the million dollars would have to come from somewhere else. One of the funds mentioned in the audio on that was forfeiture funds. And, um, that kind of brings us to today. And yes, I went back over my notes and, um, everything, where we've been on this project. And yes, we were at, my best estimation would be one point one zero seven to construct the Range House as last drawn, and that is a rough cost estimate based off of a lot of assumptions. Other points I think we need to talk about if this project is being considered is ongoing operating costs if constructed. So I looked at similar sized facilities and tried to take into account its location. It will need custodial and maintenance needs moving forward. If facilities management was to take the facility under our umbrella, we would have to add staff to do the custodial work at the facility. So I took base wage plus benefits and that staff would be about seventy thousand a year, and that includes all benefits. And then general operating cost would be forty two thousand six hundred. That would include custodial and maintenance supplies, utilities to my best estimation. Um, various inspections and hosting fees depending on the systems that are there, cameras, access control, um, or blur alarm type systems. And then I invited Barb and Clint here because I don't have included in that if the facility had internet and was on the network, which is part of the request in this. My operating costs do not include any of the costs associated with those services. So I asked Barb and Clint to attend to kind of give an idea on what they felt would be operating costs on that standpoint.
Thank you.
You have a rough number, Barb.
Just got a quick, rough estimate. Um, so we would need to add several access points, which aren't that substantial. But then there's licensing costs that goes along with those. Each access point would be a hundred and thirty five bucks and licensing for it would be a hundred dollars per one. Um, we'd have to put a switch, which runs about two grand as well as, uh, two hundred and sixty five dollars a year for licensing. Um, depending on what we do for internet out there, if we were to run fiber, that could cost anywhere from sixty to eighty K per mile. We would most likely have to install a firewall as well. Um, and that can run from a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars just the purchase price and then licensing cost for that would be four hundred. Internet, there's not many options at that location. Uh, I gotta reach out to, um, a fiber supplier that I've dealt with in the past to see what options we really have. Cause we might have to do a Starlink, which would be satellite internet. Um, or a mobile connection like T-Mobile.
I just want to add that in the one point one mil, there is part of that cost includes a mile and a half fiber optic at the rate that Clint had mentioned. That's if it's available. There is a fiber optic hub out there, but we are not. Due to the, this is, was a schematic ru- design and rough cost estimating, there's a lot of assumptions built into it. So yes, there's a fiber hub out there whose it is, if it's got a connection and it is.
So let me ask, um, if it's okay with you guys, um, how do we get more than a rough estimate, guestimate? Or?
Like in my memo, that's the next step in a project of this nature is you actually get engineering design services, which those fees would be around sixty eight thousand if forty to fifty thousand for just the design and engineering. And that was where they would go out and look at, you know, cause there's things that other assumptions are is water service feeding the property. And then, you know, network electric service coming to it. So that's where the engineer has to come in and actually dig into it and find out what is available and if it is feasible to bring fiber to the property. So.
I was just gonna say, is that also at the time, do they do the design?
Yes.
As well. And so based on that finding and the assumptions, you could, if necessarily could cut back to design, if certain things are not.
Correct. Cause that would be designing it to what they call a construction document, which means that you could hand that to any builder and they could build the facility. Because everything would be, all of the unknowns would be answered for the most part. And then at that time, part of that process is another cost estimate based off of all of the findings and the final actually settled design. So it would be a more accurate cost estimate.
Okay. The broadband seems to be the largest unknown. I think COLO is down around there. And they recently did receive some NOFA eight money that, um, just came out yesterday. I was trying to look and I'm not going to find it right now, but I was going to look at their map. They only received half the money they wanted to do that area. So I don't know what they'll prioritize. We haven't talked with them yet to see where they'll be able to go. But I would suggest that at some point we can talk to Shane and see if that's going to be, if, if, if they're looking at running fiber along there. Um, otherwise, you said it's a mile and a half?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I said, that is built into that one point one cost estimate.
What's not built in is the general operating cost for facilities.
I felt that if this is something that is, we're looking at actually, considering moving forward with, we needed to have that conversation that it's not just, we build it, we're done.
Right.
Ongoing costs, it's, it's a building. Which in those costs, that's first year operating costs. After about the five year mark, that's when, you know, your maintenance items really start to kind of work back up. And then if it's a staff, their wage is going to most likely increase. So.
What's the need for internet? Is it just totally security?
Yeah, we would need internet for sure, cause the type of facility and items that would be inside the facility, we would need certain security measures in place that require minimum of an internet connection. Some of them require a network connection because there's cameras, there's access control, there's going to be some sort of security system so that if somebody tried to breach building, so.
But we wouldn't know what the, what we'd be looking at until we had an engineer.
Correct. Yeah, the, the internet network piece is going to be, is probably the biggest unknown. The other one is water service. There's rural water on the property, but we don't know if it's sufficient to feed the facility. But then the alternative would be a potential to put a well in just to be serviced the bu- building. But the big one would be the internet. And then if it's got to be on the network, that causes other potential hurdles.
So if you needed direction, you'd need direction of whether to prepare a proposal for an engineer? Is that what you would be looking at?
I, I think that would be the next step. If it's a facility we are considering constructing, then we need to take that next leap, which is getting architectural engineering services so that we can get to a point where we don't have assumptions into our estimate.
And when you, in, in finding or bringing on an engineer, the conversation, you, we can say to the engineer, this project can't cost more than a million dollars. Like do something. So this, this project does not cost more than a million dollars. That's all we've got to work with, period. So start to finish. And they.
Would be a million less five hundred A and E. And.
Yeah, cause you're looking at if it's a total overall budget of a million, then that would, those design and engineering fees, I'm taking it would be under that.
Mm-hmm.
Would be a direct deduct from that million.
Right.
Looking at it.
Right.
Nine hundred and some thousand dollar construction budget. But yes, that is, and then they can give their professional opinion on what is the best way to cut if it is over. Instead of, yeah, we went through Cap and Lenny and I, but you know, we got it down the best we could without really getting more input on, you know, things to do different. Is there different materials we can take into consideration to bring that overall cost down?
Sure, right.
So let me ask a couple of questions because we are looking at ongoing operating costs that we had not thought about before. You're saying if facilities manage, facility management would take care of the building, you would need to add another staff member, sell rein benefits, about seventy thousand dollars.
Correct.
So is that what the sheriff's office wants? Or do they just want to take care of it themselves? And what does that entail?
I don't, I don't know what you mean by the sheriff's office taking care of itself, other than our staff out there doing the general.
People clean up after themselves.
We can clean up after ourselves, certainly. Uh, we've always done that since we've had the range. But there's certain things that I would assume and not being in Joby's position, certain repairs, certain things that need to be addressed. Um, I wouldn't extend, uh, we have done a lot of things like that out there, but it'd still be have to, have to be over the watchful eye of Joby, uh, project of this size and ongoing.
Yeah, I, I don't know that it's, I don't know that it is a good idea necessarily or realistic to say the sheriff's office would do all the maintenance.
I don't either, but I just wanted to make sure that they were understanding that it would cost facilities man, facility management money that we're looking at. What we're also looking at with this is ongoing expenses. You've got seventy thousand, you've got forty two for general operating, which does not count the IT.
Correct.
And when Clint was giving all those numbers, I didn't try to figure out how much of that would be on top of it. Do you have a ballpark, Clint? Just a, a sway.
Uh, just up and running probably be, but I didn't know about that fiber running. Without that being added in, probably five K just to get up and running and then probably another a thousand to two thousand dollars a month.
A month? So about twenty five thousand a year for IT. So that takes it up to sixty seven thousand plus seventy to a hundred three seven, maybe a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year we would be adding for our operating budget.
I'm just gonna throw this out here. Um, I feel like we're, we're dancing with a lot of maybe numbers. Um, and at the end of the day, we know something's got to happen out there. Like there, there needs to be, um, an alternative to the, the current Range House that's out there. And we're not going to know anything until we actually get real numbers from the engineer. Um, so I, I kind of feel like we, we can go round and round and round like this for, if we can keep doing that and that building's going to keep falling apart and we're not going to get anywhere. And I, I don't, I don't like feeling like we're trying to make decisions without having enough information to make those decisions. If the engineer comes back and says, well, yeah, we can do X, Y, Z, but it's going to cost way more. Or to do what you want us to do, it's going to be this, but it'll be safe. And there will be a bathroom. And if there's a tornado, done, good, you know, it may not be, it never is exactly what we envisioned at first. Um, but we won't, we don't even know that right now.
No, I, I, I agree. And, uh, as I said, you, they know there's some, what was it? There's some fiber out there, but we don't know if there's a fiber box. We don't know what the water is. So we are, we're making a lot of assumptions of not knowing. And that's where, that's why I was asking the question about the engineer. They'll provide us all that information for us then, moving forward to make an informed decision. Um, so for me, I'm kind of thinking we probably, I would want that information.
Mm-hmm.
I, I just don't think how you can future wise say, yep, let's go ahead and build a building when we don't have, when we don't have enough.
Right.
Enough to make any type of decision.
Right. And this is just for direction today.
Right.
Just so that you can start looking for, are you putting together an RFP?
Most likely, since we had an engineering architectural firm do the schematic design, I feel the most cost effective way to do that is to just hear them for actual engineering and design services in lieu of doing an RFP. We have, that is in our legal right to do, you know, so. Because I fear that if we do an RFP, um, we could get somebody else that, um, we have to start a ground zero.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Right.
Where we have a firm that's already familiar with the project and the site and the hurdles that are involved. So that would be what I, my plan.
Okay.
Give me the direction to move forward with going to that design and engineering phase.
Okay.
That's how I would do it.
Okay. And then as far as the funds that were appropriated or not, um, when, when this topic came up, I did talk with Lisa Markley and that's not a concern right now. We can do, we can do this part and not worry about when and if an appropriation needs to happen. So I think we're, we're good there. Right? Okay.
So I would just need to know where the funds for the engineering and design fees would come from.
From CIP. Yeah. Okay. So do you feel like you have direction?
I do, yes.
We need, you need from us?
You got any?
Appreciate it.
No, we, uh, yield to Joby on this process and expertise and very much appreciate everything he's done on this and appreciate the board's working with us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent.
Uh, any upcoming agenda items? No. Right now it's time for public comment number two. This comment period is for the public to address topics not on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one step forward to raise their hand will close public comment number two. Um, liaison assignments, committee meeting updates. To raise your hands.
Sure. Um, board meeting obviously yet going on today, tomorrow. Um, I'm going to listen in on the opioid settlement webinar. It's just on reporting. So I just wanted to, on financial reporting on that. I'm going to try to pop over actually to the Mary Greeley Grand Rounds and then, um, I'll be back in the afternoon. Thursday morning, I have Story County Economic Development, um, group meeting. Friday afternoon, um, I believe it's the sheriff's retreat that I wanted to pop over. Friday afternoon, I believe it's the sheriff's retreat that I wanted to pop over to for a while. That is it.
Great. Supervisor Merkin?
I have several meetings, smaller meetings this week, and I also will sit on the opioid settlement webinar and economic development Thursday, Friday, a meeting on Heart of Iowa Nature Trail and something with Maxwell and sheriff's retreat in the afternoon. Then I mentioned that the OCIO. Oh, my computer decided to die. Okay. Hold on a second. The Office Chief Information Officer did award Colo tell about half of the money that they asked for to do a project, did not, did not did not fund the ICS application that we had, the story Boone Story joint application. So, we'll have a couple of meetings coming up to try to figure out where Colo is going to go. And also to look at ICS and feedback on that and maybe see if we can get them moving on the bead monies. So, that's going to be, I think, next Monday. And that we at least start working on that. And yeah, that looks like, that looks like Monday. So, we may, we, we may need to revise what we're doing with the ARPA funds depending on what Colo can do and yeah, and see if we want to make, keep some of that for some kind of, some kind of grant match with bead coming up. That's all I got.
Okay. I have NICO, Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee meeting tomorrow afternoon. And I'm going to try to attend the Ames Assistant City Manager interview tomorrow afternoon. And then I have Boost Word Process Committee meeting Thursday, Story County Economic Development Group. And then Friday, I'm also, I have blocked off to go to the sheriff's retreat. And Monday, I'm going to spend the day with environmental health, just kind of hanging out with them and running around with whatever their projects are for that day.
Dressed warmly.
Yeah. And it looks like, it looks like tomorrow is somebody's birthday. Happy birthday, Supervisor Merkin.
It's a secret. That's why I whispered.
Not anymore.
Okay, so.
And election day.
And election day.
No, next Tuesday, right.
Next Tuesday.
Sorry, I'm looking ahead.
All right, with that now, looks like we need to move into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five.
I move, we go into closed session.
Second.
Moved in seconded Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye.
Thank you.
We are coming out of closed session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.